Online project management system. This is a great resource for teachers because they can go into eStudio and they can click on the step of the framework as you see here, Connect, and the learner and educator protocols will come up for them. In addition to that, any resource that's aligned to that step of the framework also comes up for the teacher and she can click on the resource. It's aligned to the best practices as well that are aligned to that step. The other unique thing about the system is South San Antonio ISD instructional coaches have created resources unique to South San Antonio ISD and align those to the framework. So teachers can search just by those resources specific to South San Antonio ISD. Here's an example of a resource, the best practice guides for those 16 research best practices. They can click on that. They can also search in the system if they just are looking for a specific resource, for example, for collaboration. They can search for team contract, any resources associated with that keyword will come up and they can click on it and download the resource very easily. So it's great in between those coaching sessions when the Engage to Learn coach is not here or the instructional coach is not right with them, they can go at any point in time to eStudio and get those resources and continue to get professional development. Thank you very much. Joe, any questions?
Word numbers, are there any questions?
Concerning the instructional coaches, are there so many per campus? I can answer that.
We have two instructional coaches at the high school that are academic coaches and then we have five that are shared amongst the elementaries. Then we have instructional facilitators that serve on middle schools. It is my intention to have one coach per campus at the elementaries, but we need to look at budget constraints, etc. When we first brought the instructional coach model to the board a couple of years ago, we decided to let's make sure that we implement it well and so we did one coach per two campuses. I think now that we're very clear on their expectations and well-trained, as we go through the budget process, I would like to look for some more money with our title money to see if we can do a coach per campus at the elementary.
And then what grades at the elementary? Do you start with kinder first?
That's up to the campus principal and the needs. They use their reading strategy, they use their reading specialist and their instructional coach. Now, they do have a reading specialist assigned to every campus at the elementary, but they work together as a team and so, let's say the campus principal depends on the needs. If there's, with data coming back, if there is a concern in third grade, then instructional coach will work on third grade. Or if there's a new teacher, let's say in kindergarten, then they'll work with kindergarten. So it really is up to that particular campus and the needs of that campus led by the campus principal.
Mr. Wilson Potter?
Sort of piggyback on your question about instructional coaches and, well, just in relation to a specific campus, do you evaluate at some point if there's a need for an instructional coach at a specific campus? Evaluate, I guess, the rate of maybe newer teachers at one versus an experienced campus?
Oh, absolutely. In fact, the two principals that work together, they work actually in good collaboration in the use of their coach. It all depends on, again, the needs of the campus. I know, let's say, at one campus that they, for whatever reason, had more new teachers, let's say, brand-new, not like, you know, new to the district but brands thinking new, then not only would, let's say, that coach not be shared that week, they'd work it out and say, "You know what? I need her for two weeks. No problem, I'll adjust." In addition to that, if there's a need, we also will pull the instructional facilitators that are assigned to the middle schools, even though they're assigned to the middle schools. If there is a need, we need to pull them to do a professional development after school or to shadow them and coach right there along with them, to co-teach with them. We also use those resources as well.
Okay, I got a couple of questions. Can I go from here?
Yes.
Okay, so I saw the specific examples from a few teachers. What's the overall feedback you're getting on the coaching experience from your teachers out there?
Do you want to answer that? Sure. The feedback that we're getting is really positive. They feel like they really understand the framework and through the coaching, they're able to implement the learner protocols, which are helping us achieve our call to action and our academic goals.
We start with, and when you mean bright spots, those two teachers are recommended by the principal and the principal had to basically recommend who are the bright spots of that campus. So if we were going to implement something district-wide, we started with our strongest folks as determined by the campus principal. So they went through the training first. They came up with Connect, Inquire, Involve, Elaborate, Master as a whole of this is what students should be able to do. And so we start with bright spots because, in my opinion, with curriculum, sometimes slow is fast. I've never been a believer and I've been a teacher for 12 years. Another new initiative just because it's new and it's another new initiative. And I'd rather, let's see how it goes with our strongest teachers. Let them really go through it, give us feedback, what do we need to adjust? Okay, we'll adjust this before we take it to scale. So we've gotten, like Mrs. Shields has said, we have gotten a lot of positive feedback. They enjoy the training. It's very much them leading, it's not so much someone talking because they helped create it. So we've gotten a lot of positive feedback and our hope is if they're the models of that campus and more teachers, "Hey, I want to do what she's doing. I want to see those resources." And it'd be really a ground-up sort of model and buy-in, if that makes sense.
Right, it does. And thanks for the clarification.
Yes.
So if you had to, at what cost is this to the district?
This, the whole coaching is $90,000? And it was approved last year, last summer?
July?
July, I'm sorry. Sorry, July and we use our Title I funds. Not to exceed $90,000, I think that's what the contract says. Not to exceed $90,000.
Not to exceed, okay. And last but not least, the 16 points that Joe were talking about that at some point, the teachers pick which ones they want to start with, but at some point they get all 16.
Well, and that and what's really great about this, not only that, but we start with what are their needs? What do they see their needs are? The resources that eStudio, if they want to see some, okay, here's the framework, Connect, what are some sources that would connect? They can hit it and they have second grade, college-ready standard that reflects a connection, an activity that they can do. And so another thing that $90,000 pays for is that access to all of those resources because it's not just South Sands. If anyone in the state has something that they created, it's shared on eStudio and our teachers have access to it.
That's all I have. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Are there any other questions, word numbers?
Ms. Austin, can you?
I'm just, I'm sorry, I apologize. I didn't catch the number of instructional coaches that we have. Can you give me the breakdown?
Yes, we have two academic coaches at the high school. They're all paid with Title I funds, with the campus Title I funds. We have five that are shared amongst the 10 elementaries. And then we have four instructional facilitators that serve the middle schools. And their primary role is the middle schools. And their primary role is the middle schools, but they also, if there's a need at the high school, they will go to the high school. In fact, I think oftentimes if they're, you know, they need some, an assistant principal, I need support and hit U.S. history, you know, can Dr. Harris come and, you know, just walk classrooms with me? And they'll work schedules. What I'm very strict about though is they can't, you know, forget about most, you know what I mean, because that is their primary role. But they do provide support district-wide.
Just one other question. The five elementaries, are these five coaches or instructional facilitators, do they float to be a five? Is that what they?
Right. So one coach serves two campuses. So all 10, I'm sorry, all 10 schools are served with instructional coaches, but it's one coach per two schools.
And we also have reading specialists?
Correct. We have a reading specialist. Now, that's not with Title I funds, that's out of 199. We have a reading specialist at every elementary school. And reading specialists have also been trained on this framework.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you, ladies. The next report is the paper report and I'm going to call Linda as well as she gets ready. Let me pass out some additional questions that were asked by the trustee. And this time now, we have information on the paper and a few others that I want to share that with you.
Okay, so as you're reviewing, Dr. Sardana, I'm just going to give a little background. The Texas Academic Performance Report is something that is required by law once a year to be reported in a public study. Most of the academic, in fact, all of the STAR data has already been reported to this board on a few occasions over the summer and I think our last one was, I think, in September, September 21st, thank you. But by law, we have to share the report. It has to be the actual report. We cannot, you know, modify or make a power, you know, it has to be the actual report. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Lorraine DeLeon, our executive director for curriculum instruction. Ms. DeLeon?
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Sardana and Dr. Castleberry. All the additional academics, results from STAR, and you'll see after each administration, the annual Texas Academic Performance Report paper combines a wide range of previously released information on the performance of our students. This comprehensive report includes specific data regarding the performance of students by ethnicity, by, and special populations. If you can go up, might to... There we go. So again, it has the data that has been reported previously. This time, we presented it by campus, by district. This data is combined, so it'll have third grade reading results for all the districts, as well as math, you know, say, for instance, fifth, seventh, their combined scores. So that's the initial pages of our reports. Going to, if you could go to page seven, that again, as I specified, it also breaks the data down by sub-populations. As you can see here, this is our, these are students who are participating in our valuable education program. As we reported, I believe, last month, you know, we were formally, four years ago, stage, that's stage four. In the last three years, we've gone to stage two, from a three to a two. And as you look at the data, we are seeing progress, but our continued focus will be secondary students, those in middle school and high school. In addition, also included in the paper, if you could go to page nine, please, it'll give data as to the number of students that took all of the assessments. It also, right following that, it includes post-secondary readiness data such as attendance rate, the annual dropout rate, the fourth-year graduation rate, as well as the five-year graduation rate. It also includes information regarding dual-credit course completion. But I would like to note that this data, as you can see, it'll say class of 2015 because this data is one year in the rear. So it will be until next end of November, next December, that our 2016 data will appear. And lastly, if we go down to page 16, the paper provides a comprehensive analysis of our staffing patterns in South Sands. For example, it's broken down by the number of years' experience, broken into categories such as beginning teachers, one through, years one through five, teachers six years through 10 years, and then lastly, those teachers who have experience from 11 to 20. And some interesting notes is that we have two districts here in South Sands and we have 54% of our teachers are either in the novice group or the veteran group. That is, again, it has a wide array of data. Are there any specific questions I can ask?
Board members, are there any questions? Ms. Clutter?
I enjoy reading this data. But just to make it short here, I don't want to go through every page, but just in analyzing it and looking at it, what do people see this data besides central office? Does it filter down to the campuses and does it filter down to teachers? And the reason why I'm saying this is because I notice as we go through, you know very well that grade three is only the grade that's measured as to what's taught in first, second, and third. And already, math is becoming a problem in the third grade and it just becomes, the gap just gets wider and wider as we head on to, we start looking at post-secondary and we're sending too many, we're graduating too many students. Fifty percent, a little over 50% of them, they're going to be remediating from middle classes when they get to, you know, whether at a community college or, you know, a university. And that's the concern I have because if that's, if that is a problem within our district as a system, what is it that the district is doing to help, starting in the lower grades, with math, for example? Is that I see it as a, as a problem that our students are not, they're not getting that foundation where it builds on and there seems to be holes in there and then the special pops is another, you know, it's another area. So that's really my concern as to who sees this data? Does it get down to the level of the teachers? Is it shared at the campus level? Do they see the patterns that are, that are at their campus and what the problems are in hopes that, what you just presented as to, you know, the bright spots in those areas that they're going to be concentrating on? Because if we're going to go with this program that you just presented, then what we like to see is better student outcomes within the next year or two. I mean, that's what we're striving for, okay, for more student success in those areas. So that's, that's just my question. How, how does that filter down and what are they going to, what's being done there?
Data is a fundamental target that we talk to principals about as we conduct mid-years, you know, we're visiting with our campus leadership teams. We're asking, what is the role of the instructional leader in disaggregating that data? Ms. Castro requires that our, each campus develop a campus action plan and within that campus action plan, they have to look, they list data on the first page of the action plan, the specific data. We ask them to look at subgroups. We have the data disaggregation by our vulnerable department and our special education department that give us reports. They are also going out in the end of the year, principals to look at these targets.
And with your, you read it, excellent question and excellent point, Ms. Clutter. You're absolutely right. We've kind of had, and it's not just, I don't think it's our district, I think it's been kind of a system that has been done statewide because there's no test in kinder or first grade or second grade, so we won't worry about that. We're just going to focus third grade, fourth, fifth. And we've really had to change our mindset since we started of saying, you are held accountable for kindergarten. There is, needs to be high-quality instruction every day in every classroom. And one of the things that's a requirement in their action plan is what is their goal for reading in first grade? Now, wait till third grade, first grade. We, because our, and I know you're so familiar with this, once students are on track for reading, it's hard to get them off. And if we really target our resources in kinder one, two, which is why we have, we've done, you know, we have such a strong pre-K program that is really building those foundations. But it's been, it's been, I'll be honest with you, ma'am, it's been a mind shift of having to really coach principals around, you need your strongest teachers everywhere, not just in third, fourth, and fifth. They need to be everywhere. All students need high-quality instruction in every grade level. And so the expectation I've put on campus principals is, what is your target for first grade readers by the end of the year? At semester, where do they need to be? And then by the end of the year? And our goal is 80% need to be on grade level by the end of their first grade. And if not, then let's talk about it. What, if you can't hit that 80%, then what support do you need? You have reading specialists, you have instructional coaches, more support you need from our, you know, is there region 20? What do we need to do to provide? Because that is a high expectation. But with a high expectation, then we need to have structured support so they can get there. And I'll be happy to say, you know, I know with the, as we go forward, we're going to have campuses present their action plans. I'm going to just quickly highlight Benavides, that principal. Every teacher does an action plan of their students. Kindergarten first, in fact, kindergartners are working on writing, not just, let's wait till fourth grade to work on writing. They're working on writing in kindergarten. And they track every nine weeks. Well, this, our students are here, who went into the red, who went into the green, what do we need to change? And then they come up with a different plan or adjust their plan based on their common assessments. And they do an internal common assessment every, every nine weeks. The Benavides principal is going to have, present their, you know, what he's doing and what his teachers are doing to address exactly what you're bringing up, is how they are focusing. And I know, I know we're supposed to keep it short, I'm sorry, but it's a great point now. What was really powerful that was shared at Benavides is, it wasn't so much the campus principal, it was the fourth grade teacher saying, you know what, we need more help. If they could do this in kindergarten, this in first grade, this in second grade, our writing scores would be this much better. If they could do this in kindergarten, too, our math scores, we can't. It was, I think, always relied on just the testing grades and let's do interventions and tutoring as opposed to, let's do high-quality instruction. That's the magic, is high-quality instruction right when they walk through the door. So that's something that I'm going to be sharing out. I'm trying to highlight a campus and how their student outcomes are represented through their action plans. We're not there yet, I'll be honest, we're not there yet, but we're moving in the right direction, in my opinion.
That's good to know. Another thing I noticed, and only because I, you know, I take it from third all the way down, when you start looking at the student success initiatives in fifth and eighth and then you start, okay, so those students have, well, this year they only had two administrations at least. Previously, it's three administrations because of the summer, they got that. But I know that this year, because of testing problems or whatever, you know, they, they opted not to do that. But in any case, once you get that cumulative score, then now you have to have students that have not mastered that standard now have to go through a grade placement committee. I notice that 97% of these students are sent on anyway. So are we, you know, my concern is that maybe we didn't retain them early enough, like first to second grade, when the teacher maybe started noticing that they're not, and by retaining them, you know, in the fifth grade, in the eighth grade, that those, that's a concern because then they start not feeling good about it and then they don't like school anymore, that sort of thing, you know, they start becoming dropouts, then you have your dropout rate going up. So that, you know, I struggle with that because I know that that's, that's another mindset that we need to look at the lower grades. I'm targeting that now. Because when you see the whole picture, it's not so much what kids need to know when they, when they come into school, we need to sit, what is it that they need to know when they graduate? What is it up here so that everything else below it, people, I mean, not people, but everyone, you know, staff, everyone can start, you know, building those blocks to get there. Okay, not, okay, well, we're starting in kinder, but then it's, you know, and every, and every, what, every so many years, accountability system changes and the test changes and it just gets more rigorous and the standards get higher.
I will, speaking to your retention comment, ma'am, when I first got here, we were double the rate of retaining students in first grade, second and third grade, double the state. So we were retaining quite a few. My question with that, with principals, is, so what are you doing differently for those students that you're retaining? If you are keeping them back, you know, what is the reasoning? And have we gone, peeled back of, well, some students, and now they have to meet one-on-one with me, they're going to have a retention, where I want to see, well, what's the root cause? I noticed that they're passing first semester and then all of a sudden, at this, did we find out what happened? Maybe there was a death? Maybe there, you know what I mean, what is the reasoning? Because if we see a trend where they were, you know, and there were quite a few, that students were doing well and then all of a sudden, they dropped off, well, there's a cause there, there's an external cause. Did we, did we, did we go deep? Did we do home business? Did we meet with parents? Did they bring them? Or did we just say, oh, you didn't have, you know, you got to repeat the entire, you know, second grade or first grade? And those, you know, and those are, again, those are some things that we ought to have some conversations with, with principals of, it's, we've got to go deep and our, and our goal is to catch it in kinder first and second because you're absolutely right, fifth grade is too late. Fifth grade is too late.
I have something more, but I won't.
Are there any other questions, board members?
I have.
I just have one.
Okay. I'll go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. Just on reading the report, on the longitudinal rate, the difference from 14 to 15 is pretty dramatic. Is there a reason? Is that because some of that went into the FHSP does E?
And so I have my help here, I also have high school staff, but, and Ms. Ray, I will help me, but there were two degree plans that have been introduced. We had the formerly, what we call the four-by-four degree plan, and now we've gone to HB5, where we have the foundational diploma with endorsements and then the foundation without endorsements. So that is, we understood, do you need some course of reason to that, that new?
Degree plan.
Degree plan, thank you. The new degree plan. So you'll see some of those. But I am excited to say, though, that we are monitoring closely the graduation rate and in fact, we've already taken steps. We've gone from the seventh period to the eighth period block schedule. So that for students, additional opportunities to get credits. We can go from, with the seventh period schedule, we, with students have the potential to get 28, now they have the potential to get 32. So that, so again, we are looking at that graduation plan. I'm excited to say that Dr. Yandis, you know, and the staff at the high school, you know, came to that realization that we needed to make changes.
Thank you.
You touched on my question, so that was good. But I just want to, my comment then is that when you set your action plans, the principals set the action plans and they set targets and you said that you covered those targets over the semester and then end of year and that the percentage that you're looking for is 80% and that you go over that every nine weeks?
Principals go over it with their teachers. The principal I was speaking about is at Benavides. He has nine-week planning sessions with his teachers, like a grade level, he'll get substitutes and a grade level plans, creates our common assessments, looks at their data, what do we need to adjust for this nine weeks? And so they adjust their instruction every nine weeks based on their data.
And so this is only this campus? Is this district-wide?
No.
Each principal does it differently?
Each principal kind of does it, like, some are doing it every six weeks. Some do common assessments. I want to say Shepherd is every three weeks. But even at Shepherd, they have instructional calendars and they start with an instructional calendar for the semester based on whatever data they received over the summer. Well, then obviously, kids come, the GPC, you know, if the students were GPC, well, then she makes, okay, we know these students need extra intervention, let's not wait, let's start first day, what do we need to address instructionally, do we have, you know, and then they adjust it as they go. But their action plan is a subset of their, of their campus improvement plan and... And all, all principals are, are following up on, on their data cycles. Again, the minimum is every three weeks. Some do nine weeks, some do six weeks, and they don't wait. And the, and the idea is, and I'll share this. We have a, what we call demonstrations of learning that we, excuse me, that we implemented across the district where before students leave that classroom, how are they showing evidence that they learned that lesson objective? So I even have some teachers that are tracking that data. So they, so, because the point of it is, is when we do the STAR test, it should not be a surprise. We, as campus leadership, should not be like, what happened to third grade? You should know, be in classrooms, coaching teachers, looking at data, so there are no surprises. And because if there is, then, then what did, what did we miss? How, how, and so that's the idea that is, we shouldn't wait to the quiz to find out if students are learning. We shouldn't wait for the test. Before they leave, how are they demonstrating their learning before they leave that classroom? So that is something, now, it's something that we've done. I brought that to the district two years ago. We did the same training again this year, not adding anything new to make sure we can go deep for teachers to understand and get the concepts and everything, and principals as well. So I even have, again, all campuses are tracking data. That is an expectation from my office. It looks a little differently. They know when we're on campuses, we're going to ask, hey, tell me about second grade. I want to go to second grade bilingual. Or when I go to the middle schools, I need to go to eighth-grade reading and sixth-grade math. Because I'm tracking the data as well, and I'll see a dip or I'll see this. And, you know, and work with that principal of, why do you think sixth-grade math dipped all of a sudden? So that's the kind of coaching conversation that we have.
Thank you.
One last one, I apologize. But I think if we focus all our time at these meetings on student outcomes and we're doing the right thing for the district, right? So the other stuff is whatever stuff. One of the things that I saw that kind of dropped from both 13 and 13, 14 was the amount of graduates enrolled in Institutes of Higher Education. So we don't have 15's numbers on here. But do you all anticipate with the changes that we've made at the high school, with the early college and the vocational, are we, are we going to see that dramatic increase?
We are, we're looking at dual credit enrollment. Yes, we're looking at, well, now we're testing SAT, TSAT. Those are being done at 10th, 11th grade, so we're doing this school-wide. Yes, sir, so there is data that we can track.
That was my last one.
Mrs. Gordon?
Yes, one last question. Because this report does say that the district met standard. However, there is a 2016 special education determination status that needs assistance. How are we, how is the district dealing with that?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so we, we are, again, the rating there for special education goes from a rating from one to four. We are at the second rating of needs assistance. So again, just as, and so will be joining please. But again, we are working with principals to look at the data of those sub-populations. In fact, our team, just in the last weeks, have been developing a menu of professional development sessions to go into the schools to help teachers still differentiate lessons because we're seeing that there is a need for our special education students, that they are, you know, still having some trouble and teachers are still adjusting to how to best serve them. So our annual education director, our Director of Teacher Learning, our Special Education Director, as well as all of the facilitators, have had, I think, ongoing meetings, looking at the data there and how does to go support teachers to provide more customized instruction.
Are there any other questions? Mrs. Brown?
Thank you. Probably Miss Scott, where you can answer this. We've had Early College High School, I think, for two years. This is our third year, if I'm not mistaken. Are we going to go further in that? Go a second? So we started the different tracks for the eighth graders going into ninth grade, and they've been tested. Have they been tested already for next school year? Or what is that going to happen?
I think that starts with eighth graders' test.
In May.
In May. The TSI, the TSI.
Do, we have a data that shows how many of the eighth graders that have taken that test have actually passed to go into an Early College High School path, pathway, and how many of those are going into the career pathway?
The, the purpose of the TSI is to identify students that are college-ready. So, I'm sorry. The, the TSI, the TSI test is specific to the Early College Academy students. And the reason is because the TSI exam is, is what's used to determine whether or not students are college-ready. College-ready meaning are they able to take the college courses in sequence, follow-up was given to us. So for example, second semester, they take art appreciation. So you have to score certain levels. It's, it's three, three tests within ones, with the math, reading, and the, and the writing portion. So each one determines which college courses they can take. If they score high enough in all three sections, then they can take all, all college courses beyond that. So like, for example, art appreciation requires certain scores in reading and writing, not so much in the math. So as long as the student passes reading and writing, then they can take their album for that college course. So that we have systems in place to prep them for that test. And so they'll, they'll take a test and may initially determine which students. And typically, out of, historically, out of the students that we have come in, we have about 150 to 170 kids come in. We probably have maybe 10 kids out of those that actually pass all three as eighth graders. So this really kind of depends on the cohort that comes in. And so once we identify those students, they go through a, a boot camp, if you will, a summer bridge program in August, which we've identified what the needs are for each individual kid within the Early College Academy. And those students will go through a, a training process to help tutor them to prepare for the portions of the test they need. So each of the three portions of the test operate separately. So if they pass the math, they never have to take the math TSI again. Math is clear. So we just work with what it is that they need. The students that are going towards the career-ready portion do not require a TSI. Right now, we're working on a, a more specified track that's going to hopefully emulate the Early College, but on the CTE portion, which is, I opened up one of those corporates. So that's what we're looking at right now, to give those students an opportunity to earn college credits at the CTE level, as well as certificate for prior to graduation, making them immediately employable at a high school. So that's kind of what we're looking at at this point. Those courses don't necessarily have TSI requirements because it's, it's a sequence of courses. It's anywhere from six hours to 18 hours. So it's a lot less. So those kids, we can actually start sophomore year, junior year, and that'll give us a little bit of time to make sure they're prepared for the college course work. But again, that college course work is, is based on the current technical education portion, not so much liberal arts academic portion.
And I appreciate that information. I think it's very important. What I'm going to look at is, we've been two years already. Where are we? How successful have, have we been? As far as those that have passed all the tests, how many eighth graders have actually passed the three tests to get into that college readiness pathway? How many of those have just decided not to go do a social studies degree? We just take 60 hours of college credit? How many of those are going into CTE certification? And how many of those have completed it and actually have jobs? It'd be good to see data to see, is it working? Are we being successful?
Right, so we, we can put, we can put all that together. Of course, that's going to require longitudinal study because we're going to have to track it over a number of years, especially after they graduate, which is what they're used to do. Right now, at first forward to sophomore. So we really won't have any data other than their TSI results and how many students are taking college courses? How many are taking college courses? We have three different sets of kids, we have the students that are in the Early College Academy. So you're going to see a higher percentage of kids taking dual credit. You go number to number of those specific kids. And then the college-ready kids that are working on the core complete, which we're also now working on the core sequence for that to make sure that they're, they're taking the courses in the proper sequence to, because right now, we're looking at switching some of the sequences so that way they're not taking courses they shouldn't be taking because they're not, we don't feel they'll be adequately prepared. For example, like a math, taking a college algebra before algebra II, doesn't make a lot of sense because college algebra is out of, out of rigid base. So we're considering some movement into the sequence to ensure they'll find success because we want to make sure that they pass the, pass the courses. And then we'll have the CTE kids, of course, once we figure out what those pathways look like, then we'll be able to better track where, where those numbers lie. So it's going to take a little bit of time, but we can give you a snapshot, definitely of how many kids we have involved with credit, how many kids have passed the TSI and things of that nature. We can get those raw numbers out of you. But everything else as far as success rates moving beyond graduation, that, that's going to take a while.
Absolutely, because actually, the first class pulled on graduating.
For the two years.
In two years, exactly. But I think it's important that we can track our eighth graders. Those are the ones that we tend to lose when they go into high school. And so we want to make sure that we're not losing any eighth graders at ninth-grade level dropping out.
Right now, my enrollment's about 200 to 250 higher than all four middle schools combined. So we're not losing them at the high school. So we've got to deal with those pieces. So my enrollment's actually higher than all four middle schools.
I don't, and Dr. Shabro, I don't want to create any kind of report unless you have some data that you've been keeping that's available. Otherwise, you know, we can wait until end of the school year because the school year is almost over, in just a couple more months.
We can, we can give you the information in the spring. And we've got that the kids that are going to be enrolled in college courses, we can share that with Dr. Shabro, that I can disseminate that information to you. And if you have any questions beyond that, you can go on the next page.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Anything else for me, hold on.
Now we move on, we move on to number three. It's for on ATF, Accountability System to Highlight Changes and Detail Preliminary Results for South San Antonio.
This, this third report is in reference to the new ATM accountability system that will be implemented next school year. And as the board has been informed, there's legislation that not only approved the new accountability system, but there's legislation that required that the states release some type of preliminary report based on the 2014, no, on the 2015, 16 scores. Just to be frank about it, I think the, the idea of releasing a preliminary report based on, on exams that have already previously been taken is very similar to allowing someone to win a game, a football game, and then, by the way, we're changing the rules now, and you didn't win after all. And that's kind of, that's kind of what, what happened this time around. Today, and, and the presentation is not about being defensive about how we were rated on the preliminary report. It's really trying to explain to the board, based, based on what we know today, what will be the specifics of this ATF? What will the state be looking at? And it'll be based on next year's test course, not this year's test course, but next year's test course. And it's still under development. Matter of fact, based on preliminary results that they released, that, that program was in development until right before Christmas break. And, and then they applied those previous scores. The commissioner has stated that this will continue in development most likely until, until next, next year. And so with that, we're going to share with you what we know today. It most likely will be changed at some point as the state makes a different, different decision. So I'll call on Denise, I believe, or Denise Orozco, that will do this presentation. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you, Madam President, word number seven for Saturday. And Dr. Duster? What I'm going to be doing is, like Dr. Shabro said, is explaining everything that we have. So what I'm going to show you is the current work in progress model, and that this is what the state is calling it. What we have is, we have a new system, not saying indices. We're using the word domain now. And the way it broken down for our work in progress is we have section one, is going to be 55% of it. That's broken up among the first three domains. It's going to be 35% of the best of either domain one or two. And then the additional 20% is going to be domain three. And as I go through the presentation, I'll explain each domain more depth. The second section is going to be 35% of domain four. And then our final 10% is domain five, which we do not have at this time because we're not being asked for that information yet. Okay, so right now, we also have some proposals in place. So for domain one, which is our student achievement, that name is going to stay the same. We currently have our performance level descriptors, our Level 1, our phase in Level 2. What the public knows right now, the public knows them as unsatisfactory, satisfactory, and post-secondary grade. What the proposal is right now is that we're going to move it over to does-not-meet approaches, meets, and masters. So this proposal, the, it should, if it does pass, it should go in effect on February 16. For student progress, there is no proposal for this. They're still staying with the, showing the student progress. So when we look at the student progress, what we're trying to look at is we're trying to see growth between the same test. So in third-grade math, we want to see the growth for the fourth-grade math. And there's a predetermined score, and that score, every student should be able to make it. If they make it, we get a point. If they exceed it, we get two points for that same student. Now, closing the gaps. This, in the past, we were looking at our student groups and our ECO-DIS group. Now, what the proposal is, is we were only going to be looking at our economically disadvantaged students. And what we're looking at now is to see, they are giving us a formula to show where ours, depending on our percentage of ECO-DIS, where we should be and how far below or above that we score. What they are also proposing is that based on these ratings right now, we are going to have a cut score for a few years. They're not going to change it because they want to give all schools the opportunity to reach an A rating. And then our domain four, our post-secondary readiness, what is happening here is we are going to have different types of indicators for each of the different levels. For elementary schools, we are going to have chronic absentee rate, and that's 35% basis for this domain. For middle schools, it's going to be split between their absenteeism rate and dropout rate of our seventh and eighth graders. And then the high school will be split among three. We have our graduation rate, graduation plan rate, and then the annual graduate two. You can see that we've already discussed about the CTE sequences, the post-secondary credit hours, our AP courses, and of course, our TSI, making sure that we're reaching those benchmarks on your TSI, SAT, ACT. And right now, this is, look, this is really different than the targets I provided in the past. And the reason for that is because where we might have had a target for domain one of a 60, now with the rating system, we have targets for every grade level. So what I want to walk you with you is the district one. So for domain one, and just right now, so you can see, we needed a 60 for the previous accountability system. Now, to reach an A, a 60, a B, a 47. And then, so we're 39, 35, and less than 35. So these are our district numbers. So what we're looking at for the district breakdown, and right below every title, I go, went ahead and put a legend so you can see what was needed for the cut score for each letter grade. So what they're looking at is they're looking at the total test, which we have been doing. They're looking at how many of the, how many of them are actually looking at passing. Sorry, my circle's hit off. And then we are looking at post-secondary advance. In the past, we were just looking at satisfactory, and if they happened to make a Level 2, then we'd count an extra point. But now we're looking at all, our domain four from this was a 34. And, and you can see in the legend was less than a 35. When we're looking at the advanced standard, those are our Level 3, what we know of now as Level 3 and post-secondary, our final recommendation, which is set due for 2022. For our domain two, we received letter grade D. And what we're looking at here is student progress. This is the one that does not have a proposal set. And we are looking at all the students, who, all students, and then the sub-pop that met minimum requirements. We are looking at that and seeing what we scored there. We made a 35, and it was less than 30 grade. Now, for the breakdown on the letter grade, for domain three C, what we're looking at is, and you look at the legend real quick, you're looking at more than an A, you want a seven or greater, and then it goes all the way into negative numbers, all the way to an F, which would be less than a seven. So when you're looking, when you go back and look at that other chart and you see that median line in the middle, it's how far above, how far below. And so right now, we are sitting above at a 1.3, and we receive a C. And then for a district breakdown for domain four, we, the state, we received a letter grade F. And what we're looking at here is the best of. So what I have on the screen right now is the graduation rate. It was the best of four years or five years. For college and career-ready graduates, that, those were the ones with the different indicators. And then for the graduation plan, what we're looking at is it was the best of just the regular longitudinal recommended and distinguished just the regular longitudinal recommended and distinguished versus what we're showing now, the endorsed and the distinguished level of achievement ratings. And what we don't have at the moment is our community and student engagement. We have been doing community student engagement, but it hasn't been factored into our accountability yet. So what we're, the state is going to ask us for this in the summer. We are going to provide as a district, three indicators from the list, and I'll go over the list. We're going to choose three, and then each campus will choose their own three. All of this should be provided, they're estimating around July, for us to go in and put in our choices. After that, we won't get the ratings until the end of the school year. And they are still self-assigned ratings like they have in the past years. So indicators include 21st century workforce development, community parent involvement, digital learning, dropout prevention, financials, gifted and talented, second language acquisition, and wellness and physical pain. The reason we don't have an overall rating right now is because we don't have domain five in. And then for, these are our 2015, 16 ratings. And it has the district first line and then along with all of the schools. Questions?
Board members, are there any questions?
I just, Steph, I want to know, this is a good presentation. Very easy to understand. Thank you so much. Did a good job. Dr. Savela and I have been discussing this already in previous phone calls about this. And I think Dr. Savela agrees that our focus is to move forward with this. You can't change the grades. I mean, the only way you can change it is if you do something. I did ask him if we had received domains, information on the domains, and he did tell me, yes, he did, but that it was a very voluminous file. So I said, don't send it to me. I don't want it, you know. That's okay. We need to save trees. I understand that. So I told him not to send it. But I did send him an article that showed all of the districts in Texas and how they scored as well because, you know, what was, what we saw in the paper, you know, let's compare it statewide. How are we doing, you know? Are we the only ones? Are there others? So I shared an article that has the linear ratings on there. So Dr. Savela has it. I emailed it to him. If anybody wants to see it, I guess Dr. Savela can provide that. And that's all I have. I thought it was very interesting. And thank you, Steph. You did a good job.
Mr. Rebaugh?
So, I mean, obviously, there's some changes. We're not adapted to the system yet. But what do y'all think as administration? Is this adaptable moving forward? This is going to be achievable? I mean, it's not doom and gloom?
Oh, definitely, but even right now, it's still under construction.
Right, and, right. In my teaching experience, you know, I started as a teacher. It was TOS. And then everybody got, oh, no, TACS. And then, you know, we started, you know, we were at the top of TOS, and then we fell to the bottom when the new standard was applied. Then we worked our way back up, and we mastered TACS, and then they came out with STAR. We all fell to the bottom, we worked our way back up, and now they have an A grade. And so, you know, principals, I will tell you, they're not pleased with their scores. I've had principals, I've never received an F in my life. I'm not going to have it now. We're going to, I mean, they, I want to say all of them have already adjusted their action plans to look at this data. So they're not satisfied, so this is how kind of the accountability, the history of accountability goes, is when they change the test, they change the standards. You know, we all, you know, we all fall to the bottom, and then we all work our way back up. And then, you know, in a few years, when we master this one, we'll change it again. So, so we're, you know, I'll be honest, the campus principals were very, they were disheartened. I communicated, the and Dr. Savela communicated to them that this does not erase the distinctions, the hard work our students have been doing, the hard work our teachers have been doing. It does not erase any of that. So we just need to, you know, we just have to adjust like we always adjust.
Well, and that's the point. That's what I was getting at, is that the public, I think, needs to hear. And I know there's not many public members out here, but I think they need to, more than anybody, understand that this is just something that happens every few years, and that we make adjustments and we move forward. And some of the stuff in here is actually not that bad. To incorporate some of this into our accountability system, I think, is a plus. But it's just presentation, and I think it's how we present it to the public. So I think moving forward, you know, I think we just focus on the positive and keep checking on.
Yeah, I think, first of all, our complete confidence, our principals, our teachers, that once the rules are established, and established before we start the game, yeah, before we even start the game, let's know what the rules are and have complete confidence that they will do whatever they need to do to perform well on the accountability system. The frustrating part of this is not so much the system itself, but it's the fact that politically, the legislature felt that they needed to release a preliminary, a preliminary report. Now, and I don't recall right now off the top of my head the number of states in this country that have an A to F system. I want to say maybe 16 or 23 or something like that.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, thank you, 26. Of those 26, of those 26, I believe about two-thirds or three-fourths of those 26 states that have this type of system have also introduced a voucher-type system. This is, this is all a very political conservative movement to discredit public schools and to help, and to help the advocacy for charters, vouchers, and everything else that most public school educators have stood against for a long period of time. I believe about 200, out of 1,000 school districts, I want to say about 240, 250 at this point, have school boards of these 250 districts, so have adopted resolutions against this A to F accountability system. I've not brought it up, brought up the idea or discussed it with the board at this point, primarily because, you know, honestly, I would like to see what the final, what the final, the rules are going to be before we can really say, you know, this is not, this is not a system we want to participate in. But, you know, I think we, first of all, this year, we continue to concentrate on the STAR results because that's what we're being graded on this school year. And next year, hopefully, when we start the school year, we'll have all the rules set. And so we'll, you know, our schools will perform at some point, you know. So I'm not, I'm not concerned about it, but it is, as you can tell by my tone, I'm very frustrated with the intent on part of the state. This is the same legislature, many of them, that for four decades have not solved the public finance problems, the system in this, in this state. All right, so, so like I say, making, you know, legislation is like making sausage. And for sure, that's exactly what this is. Thank you.
Mrs. Morris?
Just a comment to think back on what the other comments have been. But yes, we were throwing a curveball in the middle of all this, across the state, all the districts. So we're not the only, we're not the lone ones. I know when it first came out, and I did see it in the newspaper, you know, there were other districts that were just appalled because they were so used to, you know, being way up there as far as standards. But because it's new, I guess we as board members can communicate to our community if they're concerned because they see these Fs or they see these Ds, that it's a new system. And that, you know, our district is, you know, trying to get all the rules so that, you know, once we have the rules, then, you know, our campuses and our districts will step up to that, and then they will perform it. But, I mean, I'm sure that, you know, we were in shock, as all the other districts were in shock as to the type of, you know, rating that they're coming up with now. But I'm pretty sure, I feel confident, that our district will step up and meet those standards.
Thank you. All right, so our next subject is consent policy. The U of O states that consent and janitorial food items of a routine and of recurring nature group together under one action item. All such items shall be acted upon by one vote without separate discussion unless a board member requests that an item be withdrawn for individual consideration. The remaining items shall be adopted under a single motion and vote.
Madam Chair, I have a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we approve consent items one through three.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Prado. Do I hear a second? A second by Mrs. Guerra. All in favor, please vote.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next one is discussion of possible action items. Number one, discussion of possible action to approve and accept the 2015, 2016 district annual financial report submitted by Nathan Crupkey, CPA Bill Paris.
Yeah, Crupkey, if you take the mic as you step up, let me just remind the board, inform the board that this is the annual audit that's required by law. Mr. Crupkey's firm has committed the audit for us. I believe they've all received the board members of the street, the reports already. Yeah, distributed, you would. This is basically what the board received in drive-up Friday. There were just a few changes since then that I emailed to you. But this is the final report that you'll receive. Mr. Crupkey, it's all yours.
Good evening. Let me go through a couple pages within the report and would have any questions that you might have as a conclusion of my presentation. As you receive your hard copy document, I'm going to be looking at page number four. And as you turn to page number four, you'll see that this is the independent auditor report. This is why you hired us as your auditor to present our opinion of your financial statements. And what you'll see there in multiple pages, multiple paragraphs, what we call an unmodified report. That means we're giving you the highest-level assurances, auditors, that your financial statements are free material misstatement and free of all, or they have all of them. Start over. They have, I lost mine. Oh, goodness, I apologize. I've been doing this for so many times that you should just pull it right out, so I apologize. Let me start over. Page number four, you're going to see the independent auditor report. This is why you hired us as your auditor to present that opinion of your financial statements. What you'll find there is in the multiple paragraphs of the page, it will become unmodified report. That means we're giving the highest-level assurances, auditors, that your financial statements are free material misstatement, and they have all the required disclosures as required by Janice and the Academy of Principals. That's what I'm trying to say. Basically, all that means is that you've got the best opinion that you can receive from your auditor, and that's great news for the district. The next page I want to take a look at is page number 19. If you turn to page 19, this is essentially your income statement for the year for the district. And I'm going to pay particular attention to the far left column, which is your general fund, which is your main operating fund of the district. You'll see in the top-left corner that you had total revenues of 88.2 million. If you make your way to the middle of the page, you had total expenditures of 88.3 million. If you look at the bottom-left-hand corner, you had an ending fund balance in your general fund of 17.8 million. One of the things that we do is compare your ending fund balance to your total expenditures for the year to determine how many months of expenditures do you have in your fund balance. In this case, it comes out right about two and a half months, and that's right in that recommended range of two to three months. As we tell all of our districts, continue to watch your finances closely, everyone. You never know what's going to happen with school finances in the state of Texas, and so I encourage you to watch it closely. And finally, the last page you want to turn your attention to is toward the back to reports on page number 77. This is essentially just a summary of all of our auditor results. One of the things that we're required to do as your auditor is perform a single audit because you receive federal funds, and you expend those federal funds. And you'll notice there at the bottom of the page, we looked at four different programs in detail. And we're happy to report that even though we looked at all the laws and regulations and all the compliance requirements, that we did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses or any non-compliance. And it's a great testimony to your staff and the great job that they're doing. And so that's all great news for the district. That concludes my report, but we have to answer any questions that you might have.
Board members, are there any questions?
I do.
Mrs. Prado.
Thank you.
My name is.
Nathan Crupkey.
Crupkey?
Crupkey.
Crupkey.
There.
Okay, I pronounced it wrong. Well, thank you so much. Thank you for doing our audit this year. It looks like it was very well done, very detailed, all being permitted. I just have a couple of questions. So we just got handed the final one. I'm going to reference what we done in our board's cap, which is probably about the same. On page two of the audit, which is the required supplementary information. Okay, I'm going to read you where it says specifically, we do not, in a quote, "We do not express an opinion or provide any assurance on the information because the limited procedures do not provide us with sufficient evidence to express an opinion or provide any assurance." Can you explain that to me?
You do, which page are we looking at, I'm sorry?
It's your supplemental, required supplemental information.
Page number five.
Page five.
So essentially, what we're required to do is present our opinion of your basic financial statements. In addition to that, there are some other GASBIR requirements, Government Accounting Standard Board requirements that you have to present your budget to actual as well as pension information. And as a result of that data, we basically give an opinion that we looked at the information, but we can't give an absolute assurance. And essentially, that's what all auditors are unable, no matter, no matter what we're prohibited, to give you absolute assurance that everything is perfectly okay. Because we look at everything on a sample basis. It would be cost prohibitive for us to look at every single transaction in the district. So that's essentially what that means, is that we're just, can't give the absolute assurance that everything is perfect.
So that's pretty much normal.
It is very, yes.
Okay. And then we make sure we have the right page. Under summary of significant accounting policies, reporting entity, and I have it at page 22. Let me make sure it's the right one. Yes. Summary of significant accounting policies, recording entity, where it says, and it's the number one, reporting entity in the middle of the page, it says, "All powers and duties not specifically delegated by statute to the TDA or to the State Board of Education are reserved for the board. And the TDA may not substitute its judgment for the lawful exercise of those powers and duties of the board." Can you explain that to me?
That's generally, for lack better term, boilerplate language. We have a, you'll find that probably in all school district reports. It's essentially saying that whatever isn't clearly described as to the power of the TDA or the State Board of Education then falls to the power of the local board trustees. And so, and then the reverse is true, that if there isn't something that's specifically stated that is part of the responsibilities of the State Board of Education or the TDA, they can't usurp that power by saying, we, even though it is a state, we have this power, we're going to go ahead and take this power. And so that's essentially what that's trying to communicate. Hopefully, that's helpful.
Okay, you did explain it. Thank you. And now I'm going to go back to the handout that you just gave us, I'm sorry, on the, it's page 77, the summary of the auditor's results, where you just commented on how well we had done and that everything looked pretty good. On to the last page of that, a finding and recommendation with a finding with the teacher stipends, which was non-compliant and had to do with title and party. Estimated question cost was $72,000. It does have a recommendation, and the recommendation is the district notified the agency of the question cost to obtain guidance on how to rectify the unlawful charges. In addition, the district should implement policies and procedures on reviewing payroll charges to federal and state restrictive funds to verify that those individuals are allowed to be changed to those programs. It says it's implemented, so I'm assuming we have already met that requirement. It's been taken care of.
Yes, ma'am, that was a, you'll know the title of that page is the summer schedule prior audit findings. And so that makes you from last year. We're just required to report that, that when it was on the last year report, that we show what the update is for this year, and we're required to report that it has been implemented. So that should go away in future reports.
Okay, so it's nothing new, is there?
That's right, it's nothing new.
You probably, if you might recall, this is the money that we paid back. And while the previous auditors estimated it was 72,000, it turned out to be about 46,000.
Okay, just want to make sure it wasn't anything new on there.
Right.
Okay, my last question has to do with page 82, which is under schedule of required responses to selected school first indicators. And I know that you're familiar with the school first indicators. And I have my copy from the 15, 16. And I thought I could be smart, and where you've listed your statements and then the responses. I'm going to see if I can find it on my first indicator here. I think I gave okay. But my question is, on these indicators, and it looks like SF2 through SF10, really, those are the indicators that are in the first financial report. And that's what you're, you are grading us on or telling us, you know, your response is yes or no. And based on your responses on all these, do you, as our auditor, feel that we will be able to pass our need-to-recommend for the first report when it comes out?
You know, there are several aspects to that first rating, to the degree that it involves the audit. To my knowledge, you have met all those requirements, but I could not tell you with any sort of absolute assurance whether you are going to be, what your grade will be because there are other factors involved.
Right. It looks like most of these are yes or no responses. So, it's not like a number grade that we're getting. Last year before this, it was twenty indicators. This year, it was fifteen. So, no telling how many we're going to get this next time around. But, so you feel comfortable with what the responses are, that we should be good on our first rating that's coming up?
Yeah. I hesitate to say good or bad. I just, since there are, just as you noted, it's always changes to those indicators. I cannot say for sure one way or the other.
Okay. There was two responses, well, actually, three, where you've indicated a no. But a no doesn't mean that it's not good.
That's a good thing.
And that's something that is good. And the last, twelve and thirteen, then, those are just, and I found them under the assets. I went back to report and I found that. This is just for informational purpose, it really has nothing to do with the first report?
Correct.
Okay. But I couldn't find it in here and I thought this is something.
But that may also mean another point, that you could be seeing that in future. These are, this is really a hot topic within the school, school district finance and it's the pension accounting. And so, that's probably why that's being reported there.
Okay. All right. That's all I got.
Any other questions, board members?
Let me, the forms are, Cruppy sits down, or Cruppy, excuse me. Let me call the board's attention to page thirteen. And that's, there's a couple of things that I just wanted to point out. And I know we have discussed this before, but for the benefit of our new trustees, the very, the very first bullet, it talks about the district's taxable property values going up slightly from one point four six billion to one point five nine. It also states that because of the whole harmless formulas established with the state, the district will not realize additional revenue. Even though our local properties go up and therefore we generate more revenue locally, we get something that's similar to an equal amount from the state being taken away. So, that's what the whole harmless provisions is about. So, you know, taxpayers usually will, will many times bring to our attention that our taxes are going up. We realize that. We do generate more local money, but we, we have an equal amount from the state that is being subtracted. So, we end up basically with the same amount of money, you know, that we don't gain. I think that's an important, an important thing to get for all of us to know because we do get challenged in the community from time to time when these taxes go up. And that's, those are the formulas the state, the state has, has, has put into law. The last thing I want to point out on the same page, below the second bullet, that paragraph, it talks about the three point two million dollar renovation of the high school auditor that we did, everyone might recall that. But it also says that, that two point eight million out of that three point two was pretty much covered through the existing budget. And since we did not have to dip into fund balance to the, to the point of three point two million, we basically dipped to the point of about four hundred thousand approximately. So, I think that's, that's something that's important because we did a very major renovation of the high school and at the same time, we're able to absorb nearly all of that cost within the existing budgets without having to dip into, into fund balance. So, I just wanted to point those two things out. I don't have any.
I just have one left, I could before. I apologize, there was one more question, I just did my mind. There's a reference there to self-insurance and it annotates that we have four million two hundred fifty-five thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars that's committed for self-insurance. Self-insurance, I'm assuming is workman's comp? Is that what that is?
That's correct. It's a workman's comp.
Okay. And is this a recommended amount by the auditors to have in a workman's comp fund?
No. You should be following the, the people who manage the fund and they would be given the recommendation.
Is what is due to be paid this year?
Exactly. As Nathan stated, on August thirty-first of twenty sixteen, there was an outstanding amount of claims of those seven hundred thirty-eight thousand that had not been paid out. What I don't know is whether all of that has been paid out now or whether a part of it's been paid out now. But basically, that's, this is what it reports, that, that that would be coming out of that four point two million.
Okay. That was it. My last question. Thank you.
Sure. Are there any other questions? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve and accept the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen district annual financial report submitted by Nathan Cruppy? Will it be approved?
Okay.
There's been a motion by Ms. Alderboas. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second by Mr. Ibarra. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Number two. Approve a prorated annual stipend for a mariachi teacher to extend his instructional performance opportunities in mariachi, John Rock at South San Antonio High School.
Misses Pugain, the members of the board, every, every August, when the board is asked to approve salary schedules, part of, part of that approval includes the approval of various stipends, whether it be coaches or whether it be sponsors, all the stipends in the district. This one is coming back to you primarily because we have made some changes between the, between several of our middle schools and our high school to provide better support for the mariachi program that we have at Kason as well as, as well as the high school. And we have identified a mariachi teacher, which is one of our band directors, band director from Kason, one, one class a week of mariachi at the high school. And the fellow's teaching his mariachi program at the, at Kason Middle School and basically has responsibility district-wide for any of the after-school activities, taking them to competition or things like that. We feel that, that we have to pay that individual a stipend. The amount of the stipend that we're recommending is three thousand dollars annually. At this point, from, I would say, January the third, whenever we come back to the end of the year, this stipend will be prorated. So, out of the thousand, three thousand dollars annually, I estimate this will be in the neighborhood of about fifteen hundred that he would be paid out. But we're looking at about half of the year. And that's basically what this is.
Board members, are there any questions?
I do. Doctor, will he also be in charge of the program that was started in line, remember they had a mariachi group, but the teacher wasn't showing up?
Right, right. We, he, he will be responsible for all the programs in the district. At this point, I'm not familiar with exactly what part of the, of the, of mariachi program does Dwight still have as a result of that outside contract, not showing up for a period of time. Miss Costa and I have talked about it at length, we actually have met with folks from the outside as well. We feel we need to provide better support for this program district-wide.
Right.
So, we're looking at some real, real major changes for, for next year. If Dwight is, if Dwight's program still has not survived, we hopefully can bring it back by next year.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Board members, do I hear a motion to approve the prorated annual stipend for a mariachi teacher to extend instructional performance opportunities in mariachi genre at the high school?
So, please, second.
Okay, it was a motion by Ms. Guerra and seconded by Mrs. Prados. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Board members, before we adjourn, we still have to go back into closed session to discuss some personnel items. Please go to the, thank you. Thank you. The board will return to open session and take appropriate action if any items discussed in closed session. No action will be taken in closed session. Further, board members are reminded that all items discussed in closed session has remained confidential so as to avoid liability to the district. The board will consider and discuss the following items. According to the pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, five five point one point zero seven one, five five one point zero seven two, five five one point zero seven four, five five one point zero seven six, five five one point zero eight two, and five five one point zero eight two one. And the time is nine oh one.
I mean, this one you might use.
I don't know. I don't know if you can.
Okay. I'll see. Okay.
Usually, I touch on, usually.
Mike, anybody that's called, bring it to me.
No, whatever.
She's saying, "That's gotta know where it is." You need to do it. I bet you I saw it in your office and just scanned it, and said, "It's better than a printer."
That's how we get all our rest now.
Broken. You need to do it. Okay. It's in this office. It's kind of like, like you say, DJ.
Is that how Jeremy got the two more screens?
And what he needs, even for.
Someone had a car. It's like, no, it's worse. Something between that one.
Yeah, it's always had that. I don't understand. So, we're having to, and I'll do the gold and then we, so we just. So, my first question is, do you know where your line channel is? Do you even know where that one is? Do you even give me a name? So, my first question is, do you know where your line channel is? Do you even know where that one is? Do you even give me a name?
It's air waste management association, granted. So, I'll have, I'll be the grant and I'll probably have a couple of letters. I can't remember the day.
First, I want to make sure to see where your lines are. So, is anyone's line each are different?
It had to be somebody, somebody. And she asked around, I didn't know that. So, she noticed that because they needed to put them on some account. She was listening to the general, so, so, where is, this we have.
Starting with this.
So, now we have to go back again.
But I think definitely, the communication, the district's, you know, I can go back and do. Do you want us to start here and then you can go off?
Tomorrow, I'll do a little bit of, and you got that, same thing you're hearing.
Okay. And as far as the B and B vendors, we actually have an approved vendor, Mr. Chee, but on the website from the purchasing. We actually have, we, we, I just got it, this is important to you, but we.
You know, we have a game with it. It has to be all school specialties. They're using their online system. So, I can definitely, yeah, I'm trying, they're dog, they can log in. We give you a catalog, it's important to see twelve ninety-nine, so you're not going to know.
And it's got to be, that's what, currently, whatever.
Yes, but also actually doing business with. So, I'm wondering, I'm kind of curious to see if they would even offer to sell bins or any kind of, you know, something to see if they would, if they would be. But definitely, I mean, if you could try to find out the year, though, we're ready. If not, we're going to go back and, and like I said, one account was like, been in the district, so I'm going to check if I ask.
Very specific.
Yeah. So, you have my email, I'm P. Gonzalez, too. Okay.
Is that your motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
The time is nine ten.
Second member, please.
Send me the email.